I will now call the March 7, 2011 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 You may be seated, but want to welcome those of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's City Council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Levitsy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmison?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on a project, a community initiative called Let's Move. We will have a presentation, first of all, by Judy Baker, who is Regional Director of Department of Health and Human Services, and a friend. And after that, she will be followed by Dave Wright, who is President of Stand Up Blue Springs. So Judy, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting.
Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing you and making this presentation so the council can be introduced to the Let's Move project.
Thank you so much, and it's my delight to be with you all here tonight. A lot of this came out of a chance meeting, actually, of your mayor and me at the National League of Cities meeting. He actually goes to those meetings, and he actually comes to the optional meetings afterwards, in hopes of maybe some kismet or something to happen. And we met and had instantly hit it off, and we started talking about the Let's Move Initiative that the USDA Secretary had introduced him to earlier in the day. And your mayor is quite energetic about the project, and so I told him that we would do what we could do to support him. I am the First Lady's representative in Region 7 for the Let's Move Project, which is Iowa, Nebraska, Missouri, and Kansas. And so I bring greetings from her, and kind of a, this is from me, a big woo-hoo for what you're doing in Blue Springs. We are trying to get you some attention. If you will give us some pictures and so on of this event and so on, we will make sure it makes the First Lady's blog as well, just to get you started. I just wanted to make a few comments about what Let's Move is, so that you all would understand it as you're considering it. And let me just say that I congratulate you on your multi-stakeholder approach. I've now been in a couple of meetings where I've been so impressed by the variety and the quality and the quantity of multi-stakeholders in your community. That's exactly what it takes. The Let's Move Initiative is built around sustainable and systemic change, so that when your mayor is no longer your mayor, which is going to be forever, but if, you know, when you all are long gone, that there's some policy changes, infrastructure changes, that make for a better community into our future. The Let's Move Initiative is a comprehensive initiative lodged by the First Lady, Michelle Obama, about a year ago, with the goal of solving the problem of childhood obesity in one generation. It is a very laudable goal, and it's a very stretch, it's a stretch goal, but we intend to do it because of the importance of facing and facing down the epidemic of childhood obesity. Over the past three decades, childhood obesity rates in America have tripled. Today, almost one in every three children in our nation is overweight or obese. The numbers are even higher in African-American and Hispanic communities, where about 40% of children have, are not sustaining a healthy weight. And rates are estimated to be even higher in the American Indian and Native Alaskan communities. By combining a series of comprehensive strategies with common sense, Let's Move asks cities to do a series of a few very key things, and to make a commitment to do one systemic, sustainable change in each of these areas. First, putting children on the path to a healthy future, starting with the earliest months and years. Number two, giving parents the information they need to make healthy choices, and assisting them in making healthy choices for their families. Providing healthier foods in our schools. Ensuring that every family has access to healthy, affordable food. Access is a huge problem in places called food deserts and so on. And lastly, helping kids become more physically active. I should make you all get up and do calisthenics right now, just to get us going, but I won't. But there are new programs within schools to, just the HHS, Health and Human Services, where I'm the Regional Director. There's even in our Head Start, we have a program called I'm Moving, I'm Learning. And so, you know, using even movement and kinetics to learn by is proven to be, to improve achievement. Everyone plays a role, including you all, in reducing the childhood obesity epidemic that we have. Elected officials, schools, faith-based groups, community-based organizations, business groups, private companies, healthcare professionals are all beginning to form these alliances to make things happen. And I'm so pleased that Blue Springs is making this effort and becoming really a leader who I talk about in other communities. Some of the highlights, I just wanted to highlight for you the first year of Let's Move. The President signed groundbreaking legislation just in December called Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids, I'm sorry, Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, which was the largest change to nutrition policy and nutrition guidelines in decades. Calling, it's a law that called for changes. People have sought for years in acting the most meaningful and comprehensive change to food in schools we've seen in a generation. Another one of real interest, Walmart has become a partner. One of the nation's largest retail stores announced the new nutrition charter that is designed to bring healthier, more affordable foods to the 140 million customers that shop at their stores each week. In the week of the anniversary, the First Lady and Walmart executives stood together in solidarity on the issue. Sports leagues, including the National Hockey League, the U.S. Tennis Association, Major League Baseball, have teamed up with Let's Move. And I heard the Mavericks even had a, an ad in the, or the Mavericks program had a Let's Move ad, and that's really exciting. That's another partner that you all might look to, and we can help you get hooked up with them. The American Academy of Pediatrics has pledged 100% of its doctors will screen for BMI, and we're working for family physicians to measure BMI during well-child visits, just to make sure every child has been checked on and put on a plan if needed. The new Affordable Care Act right now requires all new health insurance plans to cover screening for childhood obesity and counseling from doctors without a copay or any other payment that would be a barrier. Faith-based groups across the country have committed to walking 3 million miles and hosting 10,000 community gardens or farmers' markets. Much more is taking place, a lot more is going to take place in Blue Springs. We want to be your partner on it, want to help in any way I can, and you really will rue the day when Carson Ross and I got together over some appetizers. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judy. Dave, did you come up?
Get my microphone on.
Dave Wright, most of you know Dave.
Well, good evening, Mayor Ross, and members of City Council. Let me get my PowerPoint presentation up for us. There we go. Find my mouse. All right. Ah, think we got it. Judy has given us an overview of the Let's Move Initiative, and now I want to share how the city and Stand Up Blue Springs are working together to implement a plan on engaging the entire community in Let's Move and making it a reality. It is all about partnership, except I need to move forward here. It's all about partnership. Stand Up Blue Springs is very excited about partnering with the mayor, the City Council, and the citizens of Blue Springs to fully achieve the goals of the Let's Move Initiative. We appreciate the vision of the mayor, and his meetings with Judy, and his thought afterwards to select this as an initiative for our city. It is the right thing to do, and it is the right time to do so. Stand Up Blue Springs, what we bring to the table is, we bring knowledge and experience in facilitating, sorry. We bring to the table experience in, do this. What we bring to the table is experience in facilitating citizen involvement, which produces tangible results. Examples of that would be the dog park and the disc golf course. Originally, that started through previous summits that we organized, and we ran through Stand Up Blue Springs. The four goals of Let's Move Initiative that we are talking about tonight strongly support, parallel, and link to the guiding principles that were approved here in Blue Springs in July of 2010. We are a family-oriented community. We have a desire to have a very high level of livability, and what that really means is that we're a user-friendly community, and we're an easy place to live. We desire to strive for and to recognize quality in all aspects of living and working in our city, and we value and appreciate the importance of innovation in all the problem-solving and charting a future course for our community. On a very cold and snowy February 2, the mayor recalls of this year, the city was pretty well shut down, schools certainly were shut down. We started an amazing partnership to engage the stakeholders in this process. Now I want to recognize those partners who have already signed letters of commitment. Several of them are here tonight, and when I call your group's name, would a representative or representative stand from each of the following organizations? Blue Springs Economic Development Corporation. And share back there, there she is, okay. Blue Springs Y, YMCA. Blue Springs FIT. Go last one, okay. Blue Springs School District, and even more school district people here, except we're having our board meeting also right at this moment. CJC Fire District. Now, City of Blue Springs, there's a lot of folks who are involved from the city, so anyway. Metropolitan Community College, Blue River. St. Mary's Medical Center. Stand Up Blue Springs. Now, that might be a big group standing up here in a minute, Stand Up Blue Springs. All right, thank you all very much. Go ahead and have a seat. We are also soliciting additional stakeholders, including the faith community, food purveyors, daycare providers, civic and business organizations, and foundations, as well as groups involved in the health, wellness, and public policy arenas. The outline of achievement that we will do in this process is that we will hold four facilitated summits at approximately four hours each, designed to identify the ideas, to develop the action plans, and to begin implementing specific steps to achieve the objectives in each of the Let's Move goals. Summit number one will be held on April 1. The attendees at that summit will be the core group that will represent the key stakeholders in this process. The goals of Summit 1 are to create a shared understanding of this initiative and the role of the core group. We will identify the working vision for what becoming a Let's Move City will mean to Blue Springs. We will conduct an initial assessment of where we currently are, and that's important because we have to know what we already have to determine if those programs, you know, can be further expanded, or if we need new programs, since we have to know where we're at and do an assessment. And then we will begin to develop a list of potential participants to take part in the Summit number 3 and 4, I'm going to talk about in a minute, and those people will take a leadership role in developing the targeted and the citywide initiatives that will again focus on the vision of us becoming a Let's Move City. Summit 2 will be on May 13. The attendees will be the same people who were at the first summit, and they will continue, continue their work. The objectives of this summit will be to create an initial group of initiatives and projects to advance Blue Springs from the current level of health and wellness toward a stated vision to become the Let's Move City. We will develop broad categories of community health and wellness initiatives, which will be used in Summit 3, and will develop plans for Summit 3 to find the goals and the outcomes, as well as the roles for the core group as they continue on into Summit 3 and Summit 4, as basically the group leaders and those who help pull everything from Summit 1 and 2 into the citizen portion that is Summit 3 and Summit 4. Summit 3 will be held on June 18. Again, the attendees will be the same people in the first two, plus citizens, a broad cross-section of citizens from across the entire community who have volunteered to engage in the process. The objectives are to educate and develop engagement of a larger group of citizens to lead and to develop plans for making us a Let's Move City. Based on the broad categories that we identified in Summit 2, we will develop a broad cross-section of targeted initiatives to support the attainment of the designation. Summit 4, July 9. Same group that was in Summit 3 will attend this one, and we will begin to build the competencies within the larger work group to plan and implement either targeted initiatives or citywide initiatives. We will also provide a toolkit to enable citizens to know how to engage with their city and community leaders to get things done in this process, to identify the resources that they need to accomplish the task at hand, to overcome roadblocks and constraints and obstacles that may be there, and then ultimately to develop the policies, if necessary, to sustain long-term gains. Because again, this is not something, it's a one-time, one-year, you know, flash-in-the-plan thing, it's just not. This is something we need to be doing for years to come. Based on the output from Summit 4, we will then identify working groups and leaders of those groups who will move forward through the implementation phase. And note I say there, "year 1 and beyond," because we believe that we will have a number of initiatives that some will be done in year 1, some will then be slated for year 2, and some will be slated for year 3, and so on. So we see this as a very ongoing project, and ultimately to develop an overall plan to achieve a Let's Move City designation. Other outcomes. Year 1, we will implement action plans for the achievement of at least one project in each of the four specific Let's Move goal areas. And these are the things we will have to have, and that is the objective, the timelines, the milestones, the committee participants, of course, and we'll need the resources necessary to make that happen. And you folks are in charge of resources to some extent, but we'll also be looking elsewhere for resources as well. In year 2 and beyond, we will be looking to sustain the achievements from year 1, and then to develop specific new plans for years to come ahead of us. We will provide regular updates to the key stakeholders, to the mayor, and of course, to the City Council. Other next steps. Our Let's Move work that we will be doing in this process, and again, it will be ongoing, it will help us in our preparation to be recognized as an all-American city. And many of you are familiar with that program, it's something many of us have wanted to seek after for a number of years, and again, the time is right to begin this process. This will be a good starting point. I'm not going to read it here verbatim. Those are the four areas that the all-American city application and process focuses on, which is civic engagement and collaboration, inclusiveness, innovation, and impact. And the way that we operate here in Blue Springs, we feel very strongly that this is something that is very attainable for us. So we believe that the work we're going to do here will help us to reach that goal. Now, we're here tonight to request something. Generally, that's the case, when you see me before you folks. We're here to ask you as City Council members individually, do you have constituents or supporters or patrons in your district, or across the entire city, that you have worked with, that you would want to encourage to be a part of the citizen summits? That's the summits 3 and 4. And if so, ask them to contact our Stand Up office, and the phone number's right there, and they can sign up to be a part of the process. To our guests here at the council meeting, if you have an interest in being in Summit 3 and 4, we have sheets available tonight to sign up. And for those of you who are joining us tonight from your homes, if you have an interest in being a part of Summit 3 and 4, you can contact the Stand Up office at 816-478-4500, and we'll get you signed up there as well. At this time, I would attempt to entertain questions that anyone might have.
Are there any questions of the council? If not, I want to thank you and Judy, and I want to have the council staff members been involved, and all the Let's Move participants to come down in front of this lecturing, and we're going to take a group photo.
That's wonderful. I believe they said it would appear in the First Lady's blog, was that a?
Gonna try.
Gonna try, that's the goal.
Certainly, it will be televised tonight.
We thank you.
And we have Fox 4 here, too, so why don't we come down here and just take?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for the time this evening on the agenda, we appreciate it.
(inaudible)
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 You guys just get behind you.
Turn sideways.
Yeah, exactly.
You have to push that in, I'll...
I wanna hear yours.
That's pretty hairy.
You're on my jacket, are you ever sitting next to you?
You have to stand in front of him.
Yeah.
I gotta get behind you.
You guys just get behind you.
Turn sideways.
Yeah, exactly.
Push that in, I'll...
I wanna hear yours.
Helen.
Woo!
That's pretty hairy.
You're on my jacket, are you ever sitting next to you?
We'll get yours.
There you go.
Let's move in.
Come on, there's a gap right here.
I'm next to you.
Hiya!
Like I said, if you can't see the camera, I can see you.
That's the goal.
Does anyone stand in front?
He's our youngest volunteer.
I mean, really, he really does see us.
Everybody up here.
Let's move.
All righty, one more.
You're welcome.
We're gonna get out of the trouble.
Thank you.
I saw some pictures of you. So sorry I missed the party.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll be there next time.
Okay, now that we've done that, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the
resolution designating Blue Springs as a Let's Move City. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. Do we need to roll call it? Let's roll call it.
Councilman Leveson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman May.
Aye.
Carrie unanimously.
Carrie unanimously. So now, let's get to work, and thank you, Judy, so much for coming, I know you have to leave.
I'll be back often.
All right, we're expecting you.
Not the rough five miles, but you never know.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a couple of seconds to allow those that want to excuse themselves to do so. Ms. Allen, if you wanna get prepped, you can, 'cause the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Jack in the Box Vacation of Platted Access Easement Located on Lot One Village Garden.
Your Honor, I have one exhibit to offer on behalf of this public hearing, which includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, location map of proposed area of the vacation, affidavit publication as advertised in Examiner, February twelve, two thousand and eleven, vacation application with applicant's explanation of the request, one hundred eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing, and tax abatement waiver. These are all the exhibits I have to offer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Councilman. I'm realizing now I should've named this agenda item "Let's Vacate," maybe retain more of our audience here, so, but it'll be hopefully informative nonetheless, and the applicant is present as well to give a presentation, should that be necessary. Again, the request before you this evening is from Jack in the Box to vacate a platted access easement within what is known as the Village Gardens subdivision. Maybe a little bit hard to see on the overhead map, but there is a small spot that is identified as the site, that is the actual easement proposed to be vacated on Lot One of the two-lot Prior to this, again, Jack in the Box is proposing just shy of a three thousand square-foot fast-food restaurant located here at Seven Highway and Mock Avenue, Southeast corner. Again, prior to this, they did receive a site plan design review approval at the Planning Commission, that was back in January of this year. Similarly, before the council, back in January, was the request to vacate portions of two easements that are related to storm retention and drainage, and now they brought back before you this evening to vacate an easement that is related to access. A modification to the original access plan is what requires the approval of vacation of the platted access easement, which is generally located, again, at the northeast corner of Lot One, which is the proposed Jack in the Box. Jack in the Box has relocated the access drive to directly align with McDonald's Drive to the north. You can see that hopefully fairly well here. The original access was to be located here, but is now gonna be further to the east on Lot Two, so the access easement connecting the two is being vacated, again, primarily for that original access, which is no longer needed. Again, the realignment requires that the access from Mock Avenue now be derived through that current Village Gardens site, which is located, as you know, directly to the east of this project site. Thus, the designated access easement for Lot Two through Lot One with access to Mock Avenue, as I just noted, is no longer necessary. Should note that the vac, vacation of the access easement will not affect any utilities or easements within the site. So the final map will show here, this shows more specifically the shape of the access easement to be vacated tonight. With that, I do wanna note, we provided a somewhat lengthy history and summary of the approvals for this project, again, related to the plat thus far, and last Monday, the February twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the vacation on a vote of eight to zero. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, little Miss Allen? Any questions? Okay, is the applicant?
Thank you.
Here, okay. Please, morning, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, my name is Brock Boyet, I'm construction manager with Jack in the Box, with address at eighty-three, twelve Almond Road, Lenexa, Kansas. What I'm here tonight is to request vacation of a portion of an access easement that is no longer necessary as a result of our relocating the drive from Mock Road on Lot One to Lot Two. And so it's merely a housekeeping item, and not a whole lot else to say, it's pretty straightforward, so, any, if you have any answer, any questions you might have.
Questions of applicant? Any questions? Senator, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of? In favor of? In opposition to? In opposition to? Close the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to introduce it?
I'll, I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number Forty-one, fifty-two, an ordinance vacating a platted access easement located on Lot One, the Village Gardens, a subdivision of land in the city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for the benefit of Lot Two. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye? Close, no?
Second reading of Bill Number Forty-one, fifty-two, an ordinance vacating a platted access easement located on Lot One, the Village Gardens, a subdivision of land in the city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for the benefit of Lot Two. Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman May.
Aye.
Councilman Leveson.
Aye.
Carrie unanimously given as ordinance number forty-three, thirty.
Okay. Next, we have David Cochran from Cochran Head, Vic, and Company to present the two thousand nine-ten audit. Mr. Cochran.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, remaining citizens. They just couldn't stand the excitement, I guess, of the auditor being here, but, I'm David Cochran, I'm managing partner of Cochran Head, Vic, and Company, we're the auditors of the city of Blue Springs, and we're very pleased to be the auditor of the city of Blue Springs. First, I'd like to thank city administrator, his staff, their assistants, we spend a great deal of time out here, sometimes stretching into a portion of two or three months, and also I'd like to thank Director of Finance and her staff, it's a real pleasure to work with professional people, both in the administrator's office and the Director of Finance's office, it makes our job much easier, much more enjoyable, at least for us, we enjoy working out here. The papers and booklets you have in front of you this evening is one called a Single Audit Report, that's an audit of the federal financial expenditures. You have the pretty book, it's a comprehensive annual financial report, that's report of all the financial activity of the city of Blue Springs for the year ended September thirty, two thousand and ten, and you have a required communications booklet. By the way, the comprehensive annual financial report has been submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for the last twenty-eight years, I believe it's twenty-eight years, and they've received each year certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, which speaks very highly of both the city and obtaining good people to work in these departments, and their efforts going towards achieving this certificate. I personally am a reviewer for the GFOA, and not all entities receive that certificate, so it's something the city should be proud of. Now, did you, is this a remote, or did you take my computer away? Thank you. I'll go through the PowerPoint, and it'll expedite my comments, and I know you're interested in an expeditious presentation. If you have any question during my presentation, certainly feel free to interrupt me, and after I'm through, I'll have a moment for questions, if you'd like. Cochran Head, Vic, and Company, it's a little advertisement up there, I'll go through that rather quickly, we're, we have a lot of governmental clients, and we're proud of our work within the metropolitan area. Now, there's a picture of some of the members on our staff that were here at various times during the engagement, not all of them at the same time. The next page is, and I'm not going to read this all to you, but, "We were engaged to perform an audit of the city's financial statements, and also determine the compliance over expenditures of federal financial assistance." A financial audit addresses three basic questions. Are the basic financial statements free of material misstatement? Are internal controls over financial reporting compliance adequately designed and operating effectively? And did the city of Blue Springs comply in all material respects with the related laws and regulations? Our responsibilities and connection with that engagement is conduct our audit according to generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and office and management budget circular A-one-thirty-three, and to plan our audit, perform our audit, obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that the city's financial statements are free of financial misstatement, and report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. American Standards, Auditing Standards Board, American Institute of CPAs recommend that we communicate certain matters to the governing board. Illegal acts, none came to our attention as a result of our audit. There were no changes in significant accounting policies except the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number Fifty-One, which deals with intangible assets, it had little or no impact on the financial statements. There were no difficulties or disagreements with management, we had full cooperation access to books and records. The summary of our report answers the basic question. Report on the city's basic financial statements resulted in an unqualified opinion, or is often referred to as a clean opinion. Report on internal controls over financial reporting, the, would not identify any deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we considered to be material weaknesses. Report over compliance, in our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with the requirements related to its major federal programs. Summary of our report, continued management letter comments, contain suggestions for best practices and possible improvements in internal control. Current year comments deal with cash receipts, purchased water, intangible asset reporting, and future accounting pronouncements. Cochran Head, again, appreciates the opportunity, sir of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri. If there are any questions, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions, Mr. Cochran? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. In the, what you call the pretty book?
Yes.
If we could show, I think it's Table fourteen, or, or eighty, page eighty-nine, maybe, on overhead? I had a couple of questions there.
You say page eighty-nine?
Yeah, it's, staff, could you help put that up on the... Yeah. This is the legal debt margin information. That's pretty hard to see, too, isn't it?
Your question again, sir?
Yeah, th, this is the legal debt margin information, so...
Yes.
And could you explain the type of debt that's in that versus the type that's not?
Well, the debt that's in there is any debt that the city is obligated to commit the resources to repayment, and then those are general obligation bonds, neighborhood improvement bonds, then usually, an addition is added for overlapping debt from school districts and others, but typically the city is limited as to how many, how much debt it can have in relation to its assessed evaluation, and I think probably that answer might come better from either your staff or the city administrator, unless that's answered your question.
Well, yeah, I, I think the general trend, though, from, on the left is two thousand and one, and on the right is two thousand and ten, and, and we've gone from less than five percent to over twenty-five percent, a five-fold increase, and most of that looks like it started happening between the year two thousand and five to two thousand and six, a pretty good bump in the most recent year. That trend, I, I would be a little bit concerned about the amount of debt that we continues to grow, it looks like a growing trend, so...
Say again, please, I'm sorry, I have a little problem here.
It looks like that trend is definitely heading in the wrong direction, and, you know, I don't know, I guess it can go up to a hundred percent, right? But I don't know what a community would be like if they were a hundred percent of their debt capacity, so...
Yeah, we've never reached any ways near the hundred percent, and, and I'd rather not categorize any of your statistics as either bad, good, or otherwise, I think our job is to report on the numbers, and whether or not they're in compliance with applicable laws or regulations, if some of the city staff would care to label it, they may.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and I did want to point that out to my fellow council members, to show them the trend, and I know back in the nineties, it was not that high as well, and, and it's a concerning trend for me, so...
Any other questions? Certainly, I wanna thank you for this report, and, and I'm always impressed that staff continues to do a fantastic job, behind Christine Kates, our finance director's leadership, and she has some of her staff back in the back of your all-stand, so it can recognize you, she can't do it by herself, so certainly she does it with a great staff, and again, we thank you for all that you do for the city, and...
Thank you, again.
...us being recognized by this honor.
Your Honor, I'd say that about staff, they have their finger on the pulse of where the money's going.
All right, thank you.
And a good evening.
Good evening to you as well, thank you. Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill Forty-one, fifty-three. Introducer?
I'd like to introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number Forty-one, fifty-three, an ordinance approving the first amended and restated cooperative agreement among the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, the Adams-Derry Landing Community Improvement District, and Blue Springs Development Three, Inc., for funding and financing of certain improvements related to the Adams Farm Tax Increment Financing Plan, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the agreement. Move the bill be approved on first reading, proceed to the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
No. Second reading of Bill Number Forty-one, fifty-three, an ordinance approving the first amended and restated cooperative agreement among the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, the Adams-Derry Landing Community Improvement District, and Blue Springs Development Three, Inc., for funding and financing of certain improvements related to the Adams Farm Tax Increment Financing Plan, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the agreement. I move to adopt the bill on its second reading, give it the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman May.
Aye.
Councilman Leveson.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
No.
Carrie, the five, yes, giving it on December forty-three, thirty-one.
Thank you. Next, it brings us to Merrill announcements. First and foremost, I would like for us to recognize, among us this evening, Councilman Dale Carter, who was recognized last week as the Country Music DJ Hall of Fame. Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate that. I'm not making a speech here.
Certainly, I hope that was, that was a good event for you last week, and you made us proud.
It was, it was great, thank you very much.
You bet. Next, Falstapunda. Falstapunda does not have an Arthur, but it's pretty profound. The best way to succeed in life is to act on the advice you give to others. That brings us to visitors, I don't have any visitors' appearance forms. Senator, is there a motion to adjourn?
So much adjourned.
You gotta think about it. There is a motion to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
Means adjourn.
I'm done.